Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Wall County School District Six on this, the 27th day of January 2020. This meeting will now come to order. Will you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Ms. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally?
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Here in District Six, we've talked often about engaging, empowering, and inspiring, and engaging students, around engaging students. We just received, in the last two weeks, our graduation rate. We knew where it might be and where we thought it would be, but it is now official that our graduation rate is 81.7% higher than last year, higher than the state average. It is maybe the best way to measure how well we actually are engaging students, and we're very proud and excited that that continues to go up. Under empowering, tonight, we will get our first bond report, and we're excited to receive that report, but also want to make the community aware that there is a community information meeting at West High School that's on Wednesday from 5:30 to 7 o'clock, and we would be glad for anyone to join us for that meeting. And under inspiring, I think it's always our teachers and our students who inspire me the most, and this last Friday, I got to go to the CMEA, Colorado Music Educators Association Conference, where one of our middle school choirs sang and received, they were one of three middle school choirs across the state that were selected to sing, and so just want to extend congratulations to, again, to Chris Pierce and the Chapllo Treble Rebels. We are now to the portion of our board meeting where we hear people desiring to speak before the board, and the first person we have tonight is Mr. Josh Wayne Scott. Mr. Wayne Scott, I'll remind you, you'll have two minutes, and our board will not respond to you, but hopefully someone from district administration will get with you shortly.
Good evening. My name's Josh Wayne Scott. I'm a parent, teacher, and community member in Greeley and the Evans Community. So I've been talking about the importance of caring adults in a child's life. Last time, we talked about support-responsive relationships and the impact that that has on children. Tonight, I'm going to talk about core life skills and what that actually does for children. So, core life skills are things that children are not born with. These are things that actually have to be taught to children as they grow up. These are things like, how do you focus? How do you plan and achieve goals? How do you adapt to new situations? And how do you resist impulse behaviors? These are passed down from generation to generation, most of the time through parents, but oftentimes through our educators as well. Something that I just want to put into your head as we go through this is, if a previous generation fails to see the need to teach a skill, does that skill then become extinct? Scientists call these skills executive function and self-regulation skills. Adults can facilitate the development of a child's executive function skills by establishing routines, modeling appropriate social behavior, and creating and maintaining supportive, reliable relationships. These all require coaching, and they require practice for a child to have. Most of these skills are developed by the age of five if the upbringing of that child focuses on these. These allow for more complex skills later on in life, such as resisting peer pressure, goal-setting, planning, productivity, and how to deal with setbacks. However, if the child does not have an adult in their life early, there's a need for a caring adult is even more critical when they reach school age. I won't be able to join you at your next board meeting. I am terribly sorry. I'm going to be attending a speaking thing for a First Amendment rights on freedom of speech in education. It's at the UC at UNC. If you'd like me to, I'd be happy to respond to that as well. Thank you. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne Scott. Our next person speaking before the board tonight is Pastor David Meek.
Well, thank you all again for letting me speak, and I probably threw off the three new members. I didn't mean to do that, and I hope and trust you've read that letter I gave to you, I think, a couple of weeks ago, to understand where I'm coming from, understand what the board's been through with me for a year and four months before, and how this necessity of getting into our schools. I went online again and found out that Craig, Colorado is using the Bible in Schools.net as well as Briggsdale, and so I just want to encourage you to look at that. You can go on site. There's a 11-page legal document about it, and I'm going to give you two pages of that tonight and share with you. And I do want to thank you all. Man, good to see the graduation up, and I'd have to think, I've got a grandson at Eaton, and they got first in state. Can you believe that? And the band, there's a little band. It just, still, anyway, they got a full spread, that paper up there, not the Tribune. Anyway, I do appreciate it and thank you all, okay? And I'm going to have a little prayer. Father, I just thank you again for all they're doing, all the work. I ask you to keep helping them. I ask you to keep giving them strength, Lord, making tough decisions, Lord, and you would just guide them and direct them, Lord, with your divine guidance. Lord, I thank you, Lord, that they're considering, Lord, to get the Bible in schools, and, Lord, they'll hurry up and get it in next fall, Lord Jesus, because I know all things are possible through you. And then bless John, and don't let him get hurt, fall again, in Jesus' name. This is a couple of pages of a legal document, and I gave you those. All the free good news, that was free right here locally for elementary and middle school. There was a lady in Johnstown, who's the regional lady that does that free good news program, so anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. Next person desiring to speak before the board is Mr. Steve Teetz. Potential new school. School bus in traffic.
Good evening, Board, School Board. My name is Steve Teetz. I have three, and I want probably two to address. First of all, I understand from our city council of Greeley that there might be way out promontory in the future, a church, a school, and homes and industry and all that. But what I understand, if there does get a school out there, it's what in Windsor District, but yet what it's going to be built on isn't Greeley. Now, I was wondering if Greeley Evans School District would be responsible to get the kids out there, or the Windsor District is, number one. And so, I thought, when I heard that at city council, I got kind of confused. Why would it be Windsor District, but it's City of Greeley that's built on? My second one is the, about the school and not enough school buses for the high school. If you sat out there, especially at Greeley West, and what I've understood, at Northridge, and I think it's Jackson by the Arc Thriss store, in that residence, sometimes I've gone by there, and the traffic, when they get out of school or going, or school for the morning, the traffic is really pretty bad, and I'm sure the neighbors sometimes don't particularly like it, even though you've got a school there, especially at West and at Northridge, because at West, you probably could walk there, because when I was in high school, we had to walk. So, anyway, that's my concern, is the traffic, especially on 35th Avenue and, of course, 23rd Avenue too as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teetz. Those are all the people desiring to speak before the board this evening. So, Ms. Crane, will you give us an update, our work session report?
Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members, briefly reviewed the calendar of upcoming events, and the board discussed community engagement and debriefed the work session, which concluded the work session.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Dr. Pilch, will you now give us your superintendent's report?
Thank you, President Matthews. Well, you stole some of my thunder. Thank you for recognizing Chapllo and their selection and performance at the Colorado Music Education Association. That is just a huge deal, to have a group from our school district be selected to perform down at Colorado Springs, so thank you for sharing that. I'll just share a couple of other announcements. We, several of us, attended the Greeley Alternative Program graduation here a week ago Saturday. Also, part of that graduation was the recognition of the students who are completing, have completed their GED and are taking courses at Ames Community College. I understand this is the largest Greeley Alternative Program graduation we've had mid-year, so that's exciting, and congratulations to those families and those students, and thank you to the board members for giving up your Saturday morning to do that. I'll also announce that we are about to launch the application process and the guidelines for participation in the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, so that should be out next week. It'll be on our website. We'll also do a press release. Folks can also come in here to the district office, to the receptionist, and ask for information and application. So we're excited about beginning that process, and we have some work for them to begin already, which you'll see tonight, as Mr. Hinson presents about the bond issue and the work that we've already accomplished in a few months. So with that, I think we should get our board meeting going.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. We do need to get the board meeting going, or to get the board meeting going. We need to approve the agenda, so I would be happy to accept a motion now.
Move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We also need to approve our consent agenda, and so we'll need a motion for this as well.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Now that we've approved the agendas, our first item of business is the Work Site Health Achievement Award from the American Heart Association, and I want to invite Ms. Regina Bellotti to the podium to present this award. Thank you for being here tonight.
I'm a tiny person, so I'll move the mic a little bit. Thank you all for having me tonight. I really do appreciate it. My name is Regina Bellotti, and I'm here from the American Heart Association. Please excuse my voice. The results of the American Heart Association 2019 Workplace Health Achievement Index were announced, and we're very excited to share that Greeley Evans District Six has achieved silver recognition from the American Heart Association for taking significant steps to build a culture of health in the workplace. The index uses science-based best practices to evaluate the overall quality and comprehensiveness of their workplace health programs. Studies show that work sites with a culture of health, with support of senior leadership, are more likely to have engaged employees and a healthier, more productive workforce. Rachel Hirschman and her team have done a wonderful job cultivating workplace wellness programs and are very deserving of this award, so thank you so much to the board and district leadership for supporting wellness.
Thank you, Ms. Bellotti. Thank you, Rachel, as well, for all your work in this area. Our next item of business is to cancel a board meeting. We are planning to cancel our board meeting from June 6th, or, sorry, June 22nd of 2020, and we'll need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six cancels the Board of Education meeting scheduled for June 22nd, 2020.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item of business is repeal, the first read of E B C E, School Closings and Cancellations, and E E A E F, our video cameras and transportation vehicles, and because this is a first read, we will not need to take any action as a board on this tonight, but, Dr. Pilch, would you give us, please, a quick summary of why we might want to repeal these policies?
Thank you, President Matthews. So the first one, policy E B C E, is on school closings and cancellations, and this actually is not required by law or by the Colorado School Boards Association, so we recommend repeal, and we handle all this information within a human resources memo that is distributed to all staff. And then the second policy we're recommending repeal on for consideration is the policy E E A E F, which is video cameras on transportation vehicles. This is already covered within a policy you adopted earlier that addresses video cameras in all school facilities and buses, so it's duplicative, and we believe it can be repealed.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next item of business is some revisions to our E Support Services policies, and this is an action item, and we will take some action on this tonight, so we will need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six revives the E Support Services policies as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, will you give us a quick summary on these policies as well before we begin the discussion?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Matthews. So, the first two policies really are around transportation and transporting students. We have cleaned these policies up to align with Colorado School Boards Association, as well as with state law, and to align with our policies and procedures within the district. So just some minimal changes there, really cleanup, and then the final policy tonight is in relation to our school nutrition program, and we're simply aligning with federal law here, that the board will approve prices set for meals, and the prices for beverages, and some deletion of language around federally food-funded provision programs.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Is there any questions or comments from board members on these revisions to the E Well, we've had plenty of time to look and examine the different changes that have been made, and so seeing no comments, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Now we're to the, what I think's maybe the most exciting part of the night, to our very first bond update, and so I will give this portion of the meeting to you, Dr. Pilch.
Thank you, President Matthews. We're excited to present this tonight as well. As you all know, in November, we passed a $395 million bond, and it has been over 20 years since District Six had a large bond issue in our community, and I think you'll be quite impressed with how much work has already gone on in a few short months since the passage of the bond. I've asked Mr. Ken Hinson, our Assistant Superintendent of Support Services, to give you an update on the work that has been going on in the district in relation to this bond issue. Mr. Hinson?
Okay, thank you. President Matthews, Board of Education, and Dr. Pilch, it's my pleasure to give you this bond issue update, which I will tell you, it's been less than three months since we passed the bond, so in some ways, it seems like it's been a long time, in other ways, really not that long, and we've got quite a bit of work that we've already done and a lot yet to go. So, just as a review of some things, but something new on this slide. If you look in the lower right-hand corner of the slide, you'll see the branding for our bond, successful bond issue, and Tree Center staff worked on this, Greeley Evans School District Six, building schools, building communities, so that is the branding that will be on all of our bond information as we go forward. They did a really nice job with that. So just as a review, the big four bullets are the four main projects that we have in terms of the bond. I'm happy to say of those four, we're already moving on two of those pretty significantly and rapidly on one of them, and the other one, we're just in progress, and I'll give you more details as we go through. The building, a new pre-create school, and the rebuild for Madison Elementary are just a little bit down the road. Also, within the bond issue, the repair and renovation project, safe and secure entries, selected HVAC upgrades, et cetera, we are in the process of packaging those into a four-to-five year plan, packaging those that we can put out for an RFP, for architects, and then general contractors to do that work. So we're kind of starting with the safe and secure entries in terms of complexity, and organizing the building packages around those, because those will need the most help from an architect in planning those out, so that is kind of in progress right now. And then we're also have put together and begun some of the career and college readiness and instructional space guidelines that we'll be giving to buildings to think about, that we'll also wrap into this schedule of renovation projects. You met RLH before, they were here, we approved them a couple meetings ago. They continue to give us a lot of project oversight. In fact, I meet with them at least four times a week, and, you know, we're like not even cooking yet, so they help us a lot with contracts, with putting out RFPs and RFQs as we're looking for contractors, and they've been a really big help. They are the ones that will be responsible for organizing these renovation and addition projects specifically, other than the big projects, so that we can get those moving forward and starting those this summer. The contracted design-build team, Adolphson and Peterson, and Horde Copeland and Mack, are turning out to be just a tremendous team. We're very happy with them. We had a meeting this morning with them on our progress. They have done a great job of working with our teachers and our staff to get the Greeley West build moving. And I'll just go to the next slide real quick. They have had an initial meeting with the City of Greeley to talk about permitting, traffic, et cetera. We have had, they have led all the geothermal land surveys. We may come back and have more done there as we look at placement of the building, and they've led meetings with our HVAC team, looking at what, in terms of systems, do we want to see in our buildings, really, starting with Greeley West, but the conversation will encompass all of our builds as we go forward, so that's been very helpful for my team. In addition, they have met with the entire Greeley West staff and asked for input, you know, what their vision of a new building would be. They have, well, we have organized DAG meetings, design advisory groups made of staff and parents for Greeley West, and we've had one of those meetings, one of those official meetings. We've also taken that team on a tour of four schools, four new schools, just really idea getting on what does space look like, what is, you know, innovation, innovative spaces, flexible spaces, what do materials look like? I looked at flooring, walls, things that are maintainable, what are HVAC systems look like, and so we continue to have DAG meetings every other week, where that staff will have input as that team shapes the design of the school as we go here toward the spring. They're also hosting, as mentioned earlier, a community meeting on January 29th at 5:30 at Greeley West. So that team has really hit the ground running. They work together. They're always together, working as a general contractor and architect together with us and giving us great feedback and discussion as we go forward. Here's some pictures of some of the high school tours that we went on. Most of the buildings that we saw have been opened either less than a year, barely open to, open for a little over a year, and so it just really gave us a chance to look at what current thought and design is, and then also compare that to some of the standards that were set forth by our facilities planning team that worked last summer, the community group that worked last summer. This large project, the McCullough-Chapllo additional renovation projects, which is going to be run as a teamed project, where we'll hire an architect firm, which we have named, and you will approve that next month. This week, we are interviewing for the general contractor, half of that, and that project will move with the beginning of McCullough, renovation in addition, and then followed a year and a half or so later with the Chapllo, so we'll have the same architect that will work in design, and then as the construction starts, they'll work into the design of the next school, and that general contractor will work to that job. So that's pretty exciting, and by the end of this week, we should have that team hired and in place. We've already started the survey work, land survey work at both schools. Bond selling, so I was fortunate enough to be the chauffeur for the financial department last week, as we went down and sold bonds, and so as you know, we sold $250 million of bonds in an hour and a half, and had favorable proceeds in that, and so I'm sure that's something that we'll be talking about later, how we can put that to good work for the school In terms of communication plan, here's the address to the district website Teresa's team put together. There will be, within this website, a comprehensive plan really for each project, so you'll be able to look up each project and see the progress and any information, updates, et cetera, about each of the four big capstone projects, or the individual projects that we'll be doing in the safety and security renovations. So that'll be open to the staff and the community, and that is open right now, correct, Teresa?
Correct.
It is up and live, so we're already referring people to that if they have any questions, so things like open houses, et cetera, will be in there. And then the next step for the safe and secure entries in the building projects, I already talked about this a little bit, but we're looking for architects for that position so that RFQ is out, and we will be reviewing those, I believe, at the end of next week, and so we're really looking, again, for those projects to occur over a four-year period, where we're adding not only the safe and secure entries, but looking at the carpet and the paint and the door hardware, and even integrating some of the HVAC upgrades as needed as we go through those builds. So, in the general contractor, we'll be looking for a general contractor for those jobs, and this, actually, this work here gives us a good opportunity to look for some of the smaller architects and general contractors to do some of this work, because they're And then also getting with our buildings, I've been meeting with some buildings and asking them about their instructional space needs, but we are getting these parameters put in place, as I mentioned earlier. We talked about them last Friday, and we need to get these out into buildings so they can start making decisions with their building teams on how they would like to use that money. And then, as also mentioned earlier, that the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee is, the applications will be open in early February, so we made good headway with that in the last two weeks, and we will just be finalizing that and getting that out on the website with instructions for how people can apply to that if they are interested. Because we're already working, there'll be some work to do with that committee. And that is all I have for an update, unless you have any questions. And that is all I have for an update unless you have any questions.
Mr. Haley.
First of all, thanks to you and your staff for the amount of work that you've done since fall of whatever, '18. So you should all be complimented for that. I have two questions. It seems like, I don't do a very good job of articulating what a design and build is, so could you give us an elevator speech as to how to present that to other people? And then my other question is, with all the construction that's going on in Northern Colorado, are we going to have the ability to find enough people to do our subwork? Or is that going to be an issue at all?
Okay, so that's a lot of words. I'm gonna think really fast here. So first, your first question was, with the design-build as a delivery method for hiring contractors, basically. And so with the design-build that we're doing for Greeley-West, it'll be a different for the other projects, but because that's such a complex project in terms of its size, it's going to be onsite, like a lot of our builds are going to be in occupied schools, that you really, by doing a design-build, we get the general contractor and the architect hired, they interviewed as teams. So they sought each other out and interviewed as teams. We didn't select those. So right away, when you're selecting a team, you're selecting the opposite of you, that you're going to have a good work history together. You know each other. And that's really been seamless with the team that we hired, because the contractor is involved in the decision-making as design occurs. And so that allows for quicker decisions regarding budget and planning. So if a designer, as they start to design before it gets way down the road, and then the general contractor says, well, wait a minute, that's not going to work, they're actually back here, step by step, working with each other and collaborating with each other, and we are right in there with them in the process. So that is elevator view of what a design-build is, whereas in other projects, you might hire your architect, you get a lot of your architectural work done, and then you hire a contractor to build it. So that, that's kind of the differences with that. Remind me of your second question. Oh, enough contractors.
The ability to find subcontractors.
Yeah, well, there's two, two things I'll say to that, is that first off, I think what we knew in going for this bond issue is that we were targeting a favorable time in the industry when a lot of construction in the area is going to be near completion. And so that's one thing we ask when we interview contractors is, what, what is your, when you're saying this is going to be your team, how available are they? You know, are they only 50% available, 10%, or are they 90% available? So as other projects start to wane, their availability goes up, so that's good for us. And what we're finding with a lot of contractors we're looking at, this is a really nice time to be looking for those big contractors, which means as those jobs are also waning, your subcontractors are also becoming available and a bit easier to line up. So that's a timing thing, and for a lot of reasons, our bond passing was really a very good time for Northern Colorado.
Ms. Henson, can you talk about the open house that will be held?
Yes, matter of fact. Our general contractor, Adolphson and Peterson, will be holding an open house for local contractors if they're interested. So it'll be like an open house that you can come, and if you're interested on a job, sometimes some of these contractors will pair up, two smaller ones will pair up if they want, have a certain niche they want to fill in a job. And so that is what A and P will be doing to help locate those and help to pull them into the, to Greeley-West project.
I have one more question. Do you have an idea where they're going to build the new building in West?
Yes.
Can you tell me?
Yes, yes. So, no. So first, what we always tell the teachers is there's, there's no design yet. Okay, there's boxes with square feet, and this is a gym, and this, you know, there's not a drawing yet. But what we do know when we interviewed this team, that the best site for that building is where it sits, because of partially the elevation of the land. So, you know, you don't want to build it low, it's in the water. So where it sits is on the highest ground, that is the best site for this build, which means then how do you build it? And so we've known since we interviewed this company, they had a very good idea of phased construction where they can start to build in empty space and then move around that campus. And as we build, we do some demo and then build and demo, and you, they plan that out with the summers to do some of the demo work and the builds. So it is a complicated build, but we have the right team to plan it and execute it.
Thank you.
Mr. Tally.
I have a few questions. Thank you for your transparency. I think it's really interesting to see kind of where things are going. My first question is about the safe and secure entrances. When you plan that out, are there priority schools that are first on your list to create these safe entrances, or how do you decide which school gets worked on first?
Okay, so I'm going to say no, that we don't have a school that is more of a priority than others because with our, with our current situation, although we don't have the vestibules, we do have locked entries. And so from that point, we do have a safe entry at the front where you have to scan in and, you know, hit the, hit the iPhone. So we don't have a priority that way. What we have looked at as a priority is that we have targeted two of our elementary schools this summer to undergo some heavy abatement and carpet replacement. And along with that, you know, it's going to mean we have to remove some cabinetry because of where asbestos is, so now we're, it's like pulling a thread. That job is getting a little bigger in terms of construction. So we have moved those to the front of getting the safe and secure entries, because if we have to do that much design work inside the building already, we might as well move them to the front for an architect to help us with the whole thing. So that's why those were put first, was because of their scope of work, also because those two are more complicated in their design and construction. Those are probably the only two we're going to do this summer. We had originally thought of doing two kind of difficult ones. So if you picture a school like Heath, the office is in the middle of the school at Heath. Okay, what are you going to do at the office with the safe and secure vestibule? That will be a complicated design change. We've moved that kind of down the list, and what our plan is, plan was, is to get these two off the ground because we're already doing work there, and then follow that probably with a series of easier ones so that we can get those done, like four to six easier ones, and then integrate in the more complex ones as we go. So we're not doing all the complex ones at one time because of time, that we end up spreading it out. And because the designs, there's not one design that will work on every school. There's one design that'll work for three schools, and another design that'll work for a couple, so it's kind of intricate that way.
My second question, I know that you're having, there are these community houses and things like that. What about schools like Chapelow or McAuliffe? Is there work with the neighborhood that those schools are in to see what they prefer? Specifically, I'm thinking of McAuliffe, the flow of traffic, is there a plan for parking since you're adding more space and things like that?
Yeah, one of the things, we've already had a community meeting with McAuliffe, I think that was in November, early December, and listened to their concerns about traffic and parking in that area. And what I've communicated to the contractors that we've had in walkthroughs that will be interested in bidding on those jobs is that, especially at McAuliffe, that the traffic and parking will be equally as important as placement of classrooms, gym, et cetera. That really has to be a significant part of the thought process in that design to help alleviate some of that traffic out of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Ms. Mash.
I thank you very much. This is very exciting, so much information, it kind of blows my mind about all the pieces that you're keeping track of. But I guess I sort of have just a comment. We thank our voters so much for trusting us with passing this bond, and we mentioned that the bond sold very quickly and that we had a really great rate of return, and so if you want to elaborate, but part of that is due to our district's really great credit rating, and that is indicative of how our finance team has managed our funds, and so we are a safe place to invest money for investors. Is that accurate?
Yes, and I was hoping Megan could be here to help me, help me with that.
I'll help you out.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henson, thank you, Ms. Mash. So last Wednesday, we actually sold 250,000, $250 million worth of the bonds, of the 395 million. We, we had two bonding agencies come in prior to that to actually rate us, so it's kind of, think of a credit score. So two different agencies came in, they scored us, they gave us an opinion, you saw that in your weekly memo, I think, that went out last Friday. So they get, they gave us a score, and then that score goes public, at which point then our bonds go on the market, starting early Wednesday morning, they went on the market, and people started buying them. So very exciting, we've done really well with the bond sales, and, and much of that really is about the work we, like tonight, when you consider the revised budget and hopefully approve the revised budget, you see in there that we're going to bring you a balanced budget at the end of the year, every year. And we're good stewards of our money, and that's part of, of the bond rating that we received. The one thing that actually is harder on school districts in Colorado with bond ratings is when, when we are sharing, and we should be, sharing bond dollars with charter schools, we don't have the ability to oversee them at the level that we can oversee our, the rest of our budgets that are not charter. And so that was really the only area that they kind of knocked us down a little bit on in terms of our bond ratings.
Ms. Mueller.
So thank you for all the work you and your team have done. I know the parents in our district are very excited about all of the renovation, but I know they're concerned as well about the safety. And you sort of alluded to some abatement that needs to happen, many of our buildings are quite old. And so I'm wondering if the contractor is also kind of including that idea of abatement and what might need to happen with asbestos in the timeframe in which they're projecting some of this work.
So I'll take that, President Matthews. This is a question that we are getting every time we talk about the bond now with community groups, and I think we got the question at District Advisory Council last week with the parents. So there are very high standards around asbestos abatement, and all of our contractors that we're working with and the architects, they know those standards. These are folks who do schools, rebuild schools all the time, a lot of asbestos in Colorado, and these folks have done a lot of work in Colorado. So we will, you know, we will be exercising the highest of standards around asbestos abatement and removal. One of the questions that we've gotten is, well, how do you, how do you begin to abate asbestos while schools are still in session? You know, they completely seal off the area, they have big, big fans and ventilation systems running to ensure that none of that asbestos is mixing into the, the traditional ventilation system while you're abating it. So it's, it's complicated work, and it's expensive work. It's, it's part of why you see what you see in terms of the cost on some of these buildings. Is that?
Yes, thank you.
Get you there?
I would add that RLH, our owners rep, one of their jobs that they do, they do owners reps, but one of their specialties is environmental science. So on our, any of our abatement jobs, as I mentioned before, that they've helped us with over 100 projects in the district, a lot of those have been abatements. So there's specialists in that area, and so when we look for contractors, we, we do it the right way, in the correct way, depending on the size and the placement and the location. Our hope is that that all gets done in the summer. So at these two elementary schools I mentioned that we really would like to tackle, I've already worked with Wason, you know, don't plan on programming in those schools this summer, they'll have to look elsewhere because we have considerable work to do and especially that much abatement.
And, and there will be times that parts of the building or the building is not accessible to staff during the summertime, or possibly over a Thanksgiving break or a spring break. Those are times that they can come in also and do some of that abatement.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions or comments for you guys, but I would just say, thank you, it's incredible to see how much work has been accomplished in, in three months. And so thank you for, for executing this so swiftly, Dr. Pilch and Mr. Henson, and thank Ms. Sponfley as well, when she is, is back with us.
I would like to add that, you know, I stand here representing a whole bunch of people that are doing work. I mean, it's in finance, it's in purchasing, it's Teresa's department, you know, superintendent helps us a lot. But it is a true, we have, there's a lot of COGS working on this, and it's exciting, it's really exciting work, so thank you.
Thank you. Next item of business is the first read of the 2020-2021 school year calendar. And so, and this is not an action item, we don't vote on this at this point, but Dr. Pilch, could you give us a quick summary on the calendar?
Thank you, President Matthews. So we have Mrs. Overton making her way to the podium here. She's the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and she has some other folks with her who will share with you the process to get to these proposed calendars that we're bringing before you tonight for consideration. And we're, we're happy to give you the overview and then take questions, and if needed, make revisions before we bring the calendars back to you for official approval at our next board meeting. Mrs. Overton.
Thank you very much. Good evening, President Matthews, and members of the board and Dr. Pilch. For the past couple years, we have brought you a two-year calendar, and this has given our families a chance to plan and organize 12 to 24 months in advance of the school year. And last year, when I brought you the calendar, I mentioned that for the 2019-20, I mean, I mentioned that we were still exploring dates for the graduation and new teacher dates for the 19, excuse me, 2020-2021 school year. So at that time, we only had a one-year recommendation. The committee spent the fall semester addressing unique dates for graduation and balancing the total days in a semester, in both semesters. This year, our calendar committee, co-chaired by Erin Snyder, our Greeley Education Association President, and Robert Hepperali, our Director of Human Resources, they recommend a two-year calendar that received 100% approval by the membership of the committee. Key things to think about that I want to highlight in these calendars, the new teachers will have a three-day training at the beginning of their contract instead of four days. Dr. Pilch, as well as committee members, received feedback from the new teachers that they appreciated that fourth day in the fall so that they could get information throughout the fall semester rather than have everything up front. The first day for students is August 13th for our first through 12th graders, and August 18th for all of our kindergarten. Regarding holiday breaks, the committee again recommends a full week for Thanksgiving and two full weeks for our winter break. Students actually have December 18th through January 4th for their break. Notice that spring break again is aligned with our local college, university, UNC, and their spring break, and the first semester has 81 days, and the second semester has 87 In April of each year, you will see two days off for the students and one day vacation for staff. This is on a Thursday and Friday. Unique started this year, this upcoming calendar, and it, the change was made so that the SAT exam makeup tests could be scheduled so that the break for students could be after the makeup exam day. Graduation will be May 20th through the 22nd, which is the week prior to Memorial Day. Because Memorial Day falls so late in the month, our graduations are scheduled for the week prior. The calendar committee felt it was important to address this change because scheduling graduation on these dates, the number of days in each semester is better balanced. Both of these calendars recommended tonight are similar to the current 1920 calendar, 2019-2020. 2019-2020 calendar. We have had so much agreement on this format that the committee wanted to replicate it again. As per board policy, you will have the opportunity to review this calendar again next year if we have any adjustments that we need to make. I will bring any changes or updates to you. I would be happy to entertain any questions or comments and of course, our committee chairs are here to help as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Papas.
I think it's here, but I'll ask you anyway. You addressed the change in the new teacher three-day training at the beginning and then it says, fourth day of new educator training TBD. Can you be more specific about the TBD?
I cannot give you a date at this point, but I can tell you that what they did this year was divided out over four nights, once, about one a month or a little bit every few weeks. So then they'd have an evening event. And then for the people who couldn't attend those four or one or two of those four, they had makeup dates a little bit later. So they wanted to make sure that they had opportunity, multiple opportunities to attend.
So I get, that, thank you. That's helpful. Just, I was just clarifying that didn't happen on another professional development day for whole staff.
Right, no, it doesn't. Yeah, it's in the evenings and so that's where we started and it was a success for the people who needed it and the induction, they could take it in two-hour increments and it worked.
Thank you.
So, and then didn't we go down from five days to four this past year and now we're going down from the four days to three?
We went from four to three. All our new teachers are on 188-day contract. And then we moved it down to three for, at the beginning of the school year, and then one that they would have during, throughout the school.
So it's the same in the new calendar?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board members on the calendar?
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Overton, and thank you, your committee chairs and your committees for all the work on this calendar.
They did a remarkable job.
I know that there are live hours that go into this. So thank you very much.
Many hours.
Next item is superintendent's contract amendment. And this is an action item that will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the superintendent's contract amendment as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. I don't know if there are any comments that board members have to make. I'll just remind the public that, or inform the public that we are not making any material changes to the superintendent's contract this year, but this simply extends the contract for another year through 2024. It is the custom of boards to continue to employ superintendents for that length of time. That is, we're a board not to do that. That would interject a certain amount of anxiety and uncertainty into the system and say that that board did not have, or that superintendent did not have the full confidence of the board. We have said both in our evaluation of the superintendent and saying now with the extension of this contract through 2024, that the superintendent has our full confidence. And I would say that confidence has been well-earned. And I don't know if there are any other comments from board members on this amendment, but seeing none, Ms. Crane, let me give us a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our final item tonight is our 2019-2020 budget year revisions, and this is an action item that will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the revised budget, including a total corporation of 331,193,088 dollars, if that was right, to transfer funds from the general fund and the use of beginning fund balance where required as presented in the revised budget document.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, would you like to give us any summary information before we begin discussion on the budget revisions?
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. I'll just say that this is pretty customary, pretty standard. Most school districts do revise their budget mid-year. State law allows us to do a budget revision as long as it's completed prior to January 31st of that school year. So pretty typical. Some unusual pieces in this revision, of course, the bond dollars came in after the last budget was written. So that is included here. Our mill levy override is up a little bit over what we had projected, but actually our state funding is down a little bit over what we projected. So there's nothing incredibly remarkable here in the changes in the budget. It just is more accurate now, but I promise you, we will be bringing you a balanced budget.
All right, thank you, Dr. Pilch. Are there any questions or comments on the budget from the board members? All right. Ms. Mash?
I'm just about praising our financial team tonight. I just wanted the public to know, I believe all these documents are available. Correct me if I'm wrong.
They are.
But it is just so detailed and by school and by line-by-line expenditure, we can know exactly where our dollars are going. And Megan Sponsor is just so, she's been doing this long enough, she's very, very experienced that her projections are often just incredibly close to what they turn out to be and so.
With millions and millions.
With millions and millions of dollars, yeah. So, and also everyone on the, your staff and in your cabinet and, you know, Ms. Sponsor included, she doesn't just work the numbers. She actually understands the programs that she's funding and understands that if we take from this, we will have to, or to put it here, like she just has a very broad understanding of the entire work of the district. And that seems invaluable to me when we're trying to make decisions with our funding. So kudos.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Seeing no other comments or questions from board members, Ms. Crane, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Papas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Well, that is all the business we have tonight. This meeting is adjourned.